Call the meeting to order. Want to welcome everybody here. I'd like to call on Councilman Siemens to bring the opening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we all know, that we've got many great organizations in Steinbeck that do many wonderful things that benefit our community. In 2018, one of these organizations will be celebrating 80 years of providing Steinbeck an area with many different good things, and that is the Steinbeck Healthcare Auxiliary. Today, they mostly run the book sale twice a year at the mall, and with the money raised, it goes to specialty equipment purchase for the Bethesda Hospital. That wasn't always their purpose. Mary Ludriger, a local writer, along with Phyllis Taves, the past chair of the auxiliary, provided me with some insight on what this group has done over the last 80 years. Back in 1937, a Mrs. Henry B. Reimer, yes, Mrs. Henry B. Reimer, moved to Steinbeck from Mountain Lake, Minnesota. With the Steinbeck, in Steinbeck, they were opening their first hospital, and Mrs. Reimer found eight other women who agreed to help organize a group similar to the one that she had been involved with in Minnesota. With an annual membership fee of 25 cents and an executive that had represented different churches in Steinbeck, they began what is a long history of service to our health community. It should be noted that the names in the minutes were recorded, as was the custom in those days, by their husband's name. It wasn't until 1969 that the minutes would start to reflect the names of the women and their given names. The first annual meeting took place April 1938 with 36 women. The membership money was used to buy linen items for the hospital. Since there was an egg shortage at that time, and especially at the hospital, the Clearspring Ladies at the meeting decided to donate to the hospital all eggs collected on the first Sunday of each month. This was quickly followed by the Clefelt Ladies offering to donate all eggs collected from the second Sunday every month. And then the discussion got around to whether they should be purchasing a cow so they could provide milk and butter to the hospital kitchen. But then, in the end, all were encouraged to donate more live chickens to the hospital. In 1943, the minutes began to be recorded in English instead of German. And in 1960, the auxiliary had over 600 members. The biggest fear in those years was when they had their annual meeting, and the husbands and fathers had to fend for themselves.[160.41][160.41](Laughter). From those beginnings, over the next 25 years, they completed many tasks, including sewing, baking, cooking, canning, gardening, butchering, and fundraising. The hospital would have had a tough time surviving without the auxiliary. The amount of sewing the women did was phenomenal. Everything the hospital needed, from aprons to bed sheets to blankets to baby things to diapers to doctor and nurse uniforms, night gowns, and the list goes on and on. In a typical year, they would make over 1,500 different items to be used in the hospital. At one meeting, the canning committee reported that a single canning work bee had produced 214 pounds of beans, 280 pounds of rhubarb, and 300 jars of assorted fruits and vegetables had been canned. All of this put into jars that had been donated and produce coming out of their own gardens. Virtually all food and linen needs of the hospital was provided by the auxiliary in the first 25 years. During the '60s, this function was slowly taken away by the new Medicare system. By 1969, the focus of auxiliary had changed. They shifted the focus from the hospital to the personal care home and extended care unit. Now, instead of cooking and sewing, they began a service of singing and visiting the sick and the elderly, and they would write letters for the patients, read to them, and take them to appointments as far away as Winnipeg. In the 1970s, '80s, and '90s, the focus continued to change to fundraising for hospital equipment and machinery. It isn't that they didn't fundraise from the beginning, now just became much more of a focus. Fundraising was done through catering banquets, serving a lunch at the Canada Day festivities at the old fairgrounds, and of course, running the gift shop in the hospital lobby. A popular fundraiser was the annual rag drive. The story goes that they got the idea to ask people in Steinbeck to set aside their old clothes, put them in boxes, and put them at the end of the driveway. And on a certain day, they would be picked up by Southeast Transfer or Penner Transfer. Then they would be taken to a local home, and in the garage, they would be ripped into smaller pieces and sold as rags to garages in Steinbeck and Winnipeg for roughly 40 cents a pound, which was expensive rags in those days. The day came, and the response was overwhelming, as on every street as far as one could see, there was box upon box upon box of old clothing sitting at the end of the driveway. There were so many boxes, they were so overwhelmed that they moved the whole operation to the newly-built curling rink. They needed to work in shifts of 60 ladies at a time just to make it through all the donated material over the next couple of weeks. The fundraising now went to kitchen gadgets, to furniture for their nursing residents, to a defibrillator, a piano, chairs, bookcases, wheelchairs, a gastric sucking machine, that's what the minute said (Laughter), fetal health monitor, and many other items needed in the hospital and the personal care home. The auxiliary even got involved with nurse recruitment and showed Phillips and spoke to the local high schools to encourage the young women to take a career in nursing. The auxiliary today looks very different from its beginnings, but the values and the commitment to our health community remain the same. It has weathered many storms, and like many organizations today, struggles to attract younger volunteers. Steinbeck is built on people and organizations that can be admired for their dedication, hard work, and commitment of its members that benefits our communities through the services they provide, just like the women who have made up the Steinbeck Healthcare Auxiliary these past 80 years.
Thank you, Councilman Siemens. That was great. We have the agenda in front of us. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. We have the minutes from August 1st on page 1. You've all had a chance to review those. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Siemens, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. No business arising from the minutes. We are just past 7:35, so move into the public hearing, and that's, we'll close the council meeting, open the public hearing in regards to 6A, Conditional Use 21705, and also Variation V 201714. This is on page 4. Mr. Workinteen.
As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, these file for conditional use 2017-05 for 850 Main Street is related also to the variance file 2017-14. I will introduce both files at the same time, and as the, as the public hearings are concurrent for, for both applications. Firstly, conditional use. The particular file refers to property at 850 Main Street, with the owner of the property being Inter Business Finance Corporation, with the applicant for both the conditional use and the variance being Sinex Manufacturing, Inc. Purpose of the conditional use application is to allow an electronic message board sign to be located in the RR Rural Residential Zone for purposes of placing the electronic message board sign on the subject property. And secondly, the variance file 2017-14 is to allow that particular electronic message board sign to project illumination to surrounding residential users. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no correspondence, no written correspondence on the file. With respect to the, the application, there does not appear to be any detrimental impacts that are anticipated with the neighboring property. The, in particular, the property to the west, while it is residential in nature, there is a significant distance separating the proposed sign location from the actual residence of up to several hundred feet. And with respect to both of these applications, recommendation is that council deal with the decision on the conditional use application first, and if council is prepared to approve that application, then may proceed to deal with the variance application. Recommendation for both files is that council approve.
Thank you. We do have someone representing the applicant here today. Does the applicant wish to speak? No. Are there any questions for the applicant? I believe I have one, so I'll ask you to take the podium and state your name and address.
Phil Rempel, Sinex Manufacturing, 850 Main Street.
Thank you. Just have a question in regards to dimmability and night, night lighting, or the amount of light at night compared to during the day, and what is the plan for this sign?
This display is auto dimming. It goes down to approximately 7% of its brightness at night.
Sorry, 7?
7%.
7.
Yeah.
So from 100 to 7?
Yeah.
Okay, and that is the plan for both sides?
Yeah.
For both sides?
Only one side is illuminated.
It's only one side, okay. Good.
And I also, I do have the permit from the highway traffic board.
Very good. Any other questions? Give a minute. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've got a question for administration. On these, I noticed it says here self-promotion. Just maybe for my information, are all signs for self-promotion only, or if somebody decides to put up a sign and they want to advertise something, some other person's product or company product, is that, can they do that?
Perhaps a, a better term, which is also the term used within the city zoning bylaw, is this application is with respect to an accessory sign, meaning the items and products that may be advertised on this particular sign relate to the business at that particular location. The terminology in the city zoning bylaw, which refers to advertising sign, relates to any third-party advertising. This application, to our knowledge, is for an accessory sign.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing. Sorry. Is there anyone here wishing to object to this file? Anyone here wishing to object? Seeing no one, I'll close this public hearing. Open it to council. Council, how would you like to proceed? We'll talk first about, about the conditional use. Counselor Siemens.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Fair. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an electronic sign to go up on a property that is on the east side of Steinbeck. Like, one of the issues here is zoning, and that particular property is zoned agriculture, so therefore, the conditional use. But I think it's prudent that we allow the sign there for a couple of reasons. Number one is to advertise the business that is taking place at that location, to allow them to show their awareness, so to speak, and also that it, it will alert the general public as to where they are located. So I think for those reasons, it would be prudent for us to approve it.
Thank you. Counselor Fair, anything further? Anything further from council? Seeing none, council, obviously, it's good to hear that we have, there's a plan in place to actually reduce the lighting at night from 100% down to 7%. I think that's appropriate. It's remarkably bright when they're at full, full strength during the night, and for them, they are a signed company, so they should know how to, how to use these things the best way possible. So that's very good. Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. Now we'll move to the variation. We have the variation for 201714. Can I have a motion from council, please? Thank you. Counselor Siemens, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. Thank you. And now we move to 6B, the subdivision 4451 20147412. This is the extension of Alderwood Crescent on page 25. Close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workinteen.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, this is an application for subdivision, as the application involves the extension of a public road. That does require the, the public hearing to be held. However, the, the decision for the subdivision itself is dealt with by simple resolution. With respect to the application, there is an application by (clears throat), excuse me, I'm trying to find the name, Poplar Estates, Inc., and with the applicant being Mr. Keith Taylor, just with respect to the particular location, proposal is to allow four residential lots to be added, and the extension of Alderwood Crescent, as indicated in the, in the attached material. Recommendation from administration is council approve. The proposed subdivision is subject to prior execution of a development agreement.
All right, thank you. The applicant is not here, that I see. Does anyone here wish to speak against or have any questions? Anyone here object? Anyone here object? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Counselor moves the, the resolution on page 25, seconded by Counselor Funk. Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the reason that this is here is because the road is being extended and not the subdivision. If a subdivision is applied for, then it usually does not come to council, but we are here because of the road extension, and I have no concerns with this at this time.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything further from council? Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. Thank you. We'll now move to 6C, the conditional use, CU 201706. This is 136 Brant Street on page 55. Mr. Workinteen.
This particular conditional use application, 2017-06, 136 Brant Street, purpose of the application is to allow a daycare center to locate within the, the subject property being residential. The current owner of the property is Ernie and Judy Buker, with the applicant being Cadence Gray. And a daycare center, just for council's information, is defined as a center to provide childcare services for eight or more children in a provincially licensed facility. With respect to the public notice, as required under the Planning Act, has been issued. There is no written correspondence on the file. Generally, there appear to be no concerns with the application in the particular zoning, with the subject property being zoned RLD or residential low-density. There are other similarly zoned and properties with RMD, being medium-density residential, and also C2, being neighborhood commercial, also in the immediate neighborhood. Recommendation from administration is that council approve the conditional use.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Before I close the public hearing, does council have any questions for administration? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Fair?
Move to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Penner. Go ahead, Counselor Fair.
Daycares are a very important thing for working, seeing most homes have two waiters and their families, and so these are very necessary, and so it's good to see another one of those coming.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Penner, anything?
Nothing further.
Anything further from council? All right, call for the question. All those in favor, carried. Thank you. We have no delegations today. Reports and recommendations from the city manager. Anything to add, Mr. Workinteen?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have the counts payable in the back of the book that you've all had a chance to review. Can I have a motion to approve those, please? Counselor Siemens, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. We have the financial statements ending July 31st in front of us. You've had a chance to see those. Can I have someone move to approve those, please? Counselor Funk, seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. We have 9C, we have the building permits ending July, for July. This is on page 64. Council, we've continued to see substantial growth in the city. Having $36 million worth of permits so far this year is an excellent year. Another 21 dwelling units, it's good to see. There is a motion on the bottom of page 64. Can I have someone move that, please? Counselor Funk, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say it's really good to have like almost six and a half million, and plus, there's a really good mix. If you look, there's some commercial, which really brings us up, but it's a really good mix. It's good to see a lot of homes, a lot of people making Steinbeck their home.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. We have bylaw 2082. This is third reading. This is in regards to 33, 333 Lowen Boulevard. This is on page 65. Mr. Workinteen, if you want to just add, add your comments?
Certainly. This was a matter of public hearing and second reading that city council addressed on July the 18th. At that time, council did pass second reading subsequent to, to the public hearing. However, due to a registered objection, could not proceed to third reading. The, the one objector for the, for the rezoning application has subsequently withdrawn their objection. As a result, the matter does not require advancing to the municipal board for further consideration, and should council wish to proceed, may give this bylaw to rezone the particular property at 333 Lowen Boulevard, 38.
Okay, thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Move to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is, I think, particularly important rezoning, because this is, to my knowledge, the first time we've ever used our residential mixed-use zoning. So this is a kind of a red-letter day for us that way. The reason that council has moved towards that change in the past was to encourage exactly the mix that allows residences and commercial industries or, commercial entities to coexist. In this one particularly, council has already seen the proposal. We've looked at the plans, and there's been the appropriate public notices sent, so I feel that this is an important rezoning, and I'm happy to see it. Go ahead.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Penner?
Sure, I just had one comment during the public hearing, and a lot of the residents in the area were concerned in particular about their property values, given the nature of, I guess, the rezoning and its potentially going up on the property. I did a little bit of research the last few weeks, reading up on some of these types of scenarios, and I, I guess I just wanted to encourage them that typically, property values do not go down around structures such as this, because when it's aging in place, some of these more high-care facilities, spouses, family members tend to actually want to be close to the loved ones in these facilities. So if anything, it could potentially do the opposite, make their properties more valuable due to the location where their family members will be. So I just, I guess, wanted to reassure the neighbors in the area that hopefully that would mitigate some of their concerns.
Very good. Counselor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is a case that I think is particularly good to see in the city, because there were people, there were quite a few people that had objected, and when they had all the information, they actually removed their objections fairly quickly because of the, they were pleased to see a structure such as this coming to this community. And in particular, the, the person, I know the person that had objected, had he been here, wouldn't, he wouldn't have, he would have removed his objection at the meeting, but he couldn't do that because he was out of town. But I'm glad to see that people were compassionate, and, and they liked to see that this kind of structure coming to the community, and so that's why they removed their objections and allowed this to go forward.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Siemens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also agree with this project. I think it's a good project for our community for all the reasons mentioned, and I think the location suits as well on Lowen Boulevard. I think this is going to put further stress on our sidewalks in that area, including Albert Street. We've had a request from that neighborhood for a sidewalk down Albert as well, and that, I think council needs to put that back on their agenda as well, and have that discussion on our next study session, whether Albert Street should actually get a sidewalk at this point already in light of this project.
Thank you. Further discussion? Did we lose a fish?[1451.11][1451.11](Laughter). That was a fish jumping out of the water.[1455.83][1455.83](Laughter). All right. Counsel, any further discussion? Counselor Penner in closing.
Thank you. Yes, I'd also like to agree with Counselor Siemens' assessment of the need for a sidewalk in that area. I, I travel that route a lot, and if there's going to be more activity there, and certainly Lowen is very busy as well, so I think sidewalk would be a good safety measure for the people that live along that area.
Thank you. Council, this is pretty significant, as Counselor Penner has said. This is going from a C4 commercial property to residential mixed, and I think that's really is significant, and we do want to encourage more mixed-use, where people can live and work in the same or similar places. And so this is a very unique project that's being proposed. In the end, we'll see how that transpires, and we want to encourage them with that project. But we also want to recognize that this is a simple rezoning, and rezoning means that this rezoning in of itself is significant, because this is the first in this, in the city when it comes to residential mixed-use zoning. So with that, I'm encouraged to see this move forward, and I'm encouraged that after the information that people had received, that they felt they could remove their objection. Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. Thank you. Then we do have a variation in front of us of a similar nature on 333 Lowen Boulevard. Page 74 is the information where it starts. Mr. Workinteen, anything further to add?
Perhaps I will introduce this file again. The public hearing for this particular application was dealt with at the council meeting of July 18th. However, due to the nature of the application, could not be dealt with by council until the, the rezoning just completed was, was dealt with. With respect to the variance, it was an application for this particular property by Mr. Robert Robloski from MMP Architects Acting on Their Behalf. Purpose of the variance application was to allow a building height of 120 feet, whereas the maximum height allowed in the RMX residential mixed-use zone is 85 feet. As was noted, the public hearing was concluded, and should council wish to approve the application for variance, the recommendation is that council proceed to do so, and the related development agreement was subject to the prior rezoning, so there are no other conditions.
Okay, thank you. So now, council, we can proceed with this after that public hearing. How would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, 120. Thank you, seconded by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
Well, the way it stands, if it remains C4 zoning, they can really build however high they want without even having to come through council. They don't need a variance. Now, with the rezoning, it's supposed to limit it to 85 feet, so I just think it kind of makes sense that we would allow what they'd be able to do, the current zoning, to get the zoning we actually want.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Penner?
Yes, thank you. I guess, just to add to those comments, I understand, too, that the business plan that is currently in place for this project is dependent on being 120 feet, and if we, if we ask for less, then we're jeopardizing the prospects of the success of this project, just in addition to those, the C4 zoning that does allow a higher property. So I, I feel very comfortable with this. The architect has also looked at the shadows that are cast and the overhang, and I feel confident that this will be a good project for everyone.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Funk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three. I'd like to just comment on Counselor Penner's common sense approach, right? With the C4 zoning according to the mixed-use and the height, I agree with that. And just to give some perspective, earlier I asked about the height of the Credit Union. The height of the Credit Union is approximately 110 feet. And at first, the Credit Union was a very big building, and now we're used to it, it's not so tall anymore. So that's, it's about that height when you look at, when you look at the, what's going to go there. And I think with the mixed-use and the kind of building that's going to be there and what's going to happen there, I think that area is going to really appreciate that floor.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing? No. Council, call for the question. All those in favor, opposed? Carried. Thank you. Any questions of council? Seeing none, we'll now move to 11A. This is the Manitoba, this is Correspondents' Petitions on page 82. This is in regards to Manitoba Government Affairs, the federal gas tax fund. Take that as information for now. Council, we will make a decision as we go into budget process on what to do with these additional dollars that were slightly unexpected, although the $8,800 is not a lot of money, but it's something, so it's good. not a lot of money, but it's something, so it's good. Take that as information. We'll move to eleven B. That's the Minister of Indigenous and Municipal Relations on page eighty-five. Take that as information. Move to eleven C. We have a letter from Jennifer Blatz, the CAO of Arm of Saint Anne, on page eighty-seven. Any action council wishes to take? Take it as information. There's no other business other than excusing the member that is not presently here. Does council wish to excuse the member? Counselor Funk, seconded by Counselor Seaman's. Any discussion?
Well, I, I don't think I could support it.
What Counselor Fair is suggesting is that this is the end of Counselor Seaman's eleven years of perfect attendance, and it's not because he didn't want to be here, it's because he had other very important things to go to, so. Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. Bragging rights are gone.
Adjournment?
Oh, sorry! Motion to adjourn? Counselor Seaman's, Counselor Penner, all those in favor. Thank you.